About five more minutes before our regular reschedule meeting begin. But I wanted to introduce you to trustee Linda Washington House. She had a request of the audience and of the board before we start our meeting in about four minutes. If everyone can make sure you have signed in just outside the door, behind Mayor Hanks. Thank you, Mr. Hanks. Welcome, Mr. Hanks, to our audience tonight. Trustee Burgess in our house, also from our village. And Robertson, sure, the district's attorney, is Sue Glover at the door. So I'd like to welcome to the stage. If you can please sign in legibly, so that we can read your name. We are recording tonight throughout the entire meeting. So sidebar conversations, I ask, is you can keep them to a minimum. And when it is your turn to speak, if you can say your name, state your name, and speak clearly for the record and recording. You're now in the hang- we have about four minutes, and we have hands up, trustee Washington House.
Thank you, President Davenport. Real quickly, I just want to say, I want to thank all of the school board for inviting us to come over tonight to do this video shoot real quick. And what we're doing is, I'm a trustee, and I've been appointed to be on the Neighborhood Watch. So we have signs that's all over the village. They just went up last week. How many of you seen the signs coming into Saw Village? They look like this. They are very- we have about forty of them. And that was a great achievement for us to be able to accomplish. So if you know the song by Pharrell, it's global. It's all over the world. And Oprah had him on her show. And everybody's doing "Happy." So Saw Village, we're not going to come behind. We're going to do our version of "Happy." And I've spoken with people in the audience. So what we're going to do is, we have our team here tonight that's going to shoot the board and to the music, they're just going to have with their Neighborhood Watch signs, because the students at their schools live in these neighborhoods. And we're working with the police to call the police, because there's burglary and whatever's going on. But crime is going down, because we're all watching the neighborhood. So that's the purpose of the video. That's the purpose of the decals, for the signs for the village. So we're going to do a cameo appearance, just a blanket shot of the audience. So those that want to, you have the decals. You can just rock. You want one, okay? You can just rock to the music. Okay, thank you, thank you. You can just rock to the music. I know we may have some great dancers and some people that can sing. You want one? Thank you.
One more.
Okay, pass them back. Thank you. And that can do black backflips. You want to do all kinds of acrobats, but you can't do it in here tonight. And I'm so glad to have my mayor here, and trustee Burgess is here. So we're going to go and get started. We have one minute. So we're going to start the song "Happy." Those that have them, you know, you never know when the camera is on you. So Pharrell may see you and put you on his next video. So if Mother Hanks can say, "When are you going to get started?" I know it's all right. GMO, are you coming? Okay. We're going to get started right quick. We want to thank you all for supporting the Neighborhood Watch of Saw Village. Thank you! Give your staff a big hand clap. Thank you, 168.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Fun stuff.
Nice way to open up a wonderful meeting. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call for order. Our rescheduled regular school board meeting today, April 21st, 2014, at 6:03 PM. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davenport.
Present.
Dr. Elme.
Here.
Mrs. Green.
Here.
Ms. Howard.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Casali.
Present.
Mr. Stevenson here.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum to proceed with our meeting. And we have a special guest this evening. I'll turn you over to Board Member Green.
Okay, for the pledge tonight. Angel Lee is a third grade student in Mrs. Ali's room. Ali's class. She has two brothers that attend Ricover Junior High School. Angel enjoys baking and doing art and crafts. Angel is the village of Saw Village sticker finalist for Saw Village. Her design will be the village of Saw Village for their 2014-2015 year. How about that? Come up, Angel. It's here.
All right, for the pledge. Will it just follow you?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Congratulations again on the sticker. I'll be getting couple of them. We have something special for you, Board Member Green.
Certificate of appreciation and recognition of reciting the Pledge of Allegiance before the community consolidates school board, one school district, 168 school board, Angel Lee, April 28th, 2014.
Okay, teacher's mom, dad, brothers. Hanks with the superintendent.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Very good.
Brothers. There you go.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Very good.
Moving on to item, item 3A, presentations. I'm going to turn you over to the hands of our superintendent regarding Rapture's visitor's ID. We've already had months ago, a presentation from Lobby Guard. So the board requested more information, and we wanted to hear from another company. So this is the other company that Mr. Travellini will help you.
Rapture will be here in May. But I did send you the quote, and I sent you a bunch of information, questions, answers, anything, and how they roll out. Last week, I mean, last month, you had asked me, what were some of the uphill battles with rolling this out with the community? And what the districts have said around us was, the first year was the hardest. There were several parents who did not have an ID, but they never told a parent they couldn't come to the school. So when a parent came and they, he or she did not have an ID, what they did is, they would call the teacher out to a conference room, or call the child out to the conference room. And then the parent was able to ask the question, or talk about what they needed to talk about. So it's not where they said, "If you don't have an ID, you can't enter our school." So there was like a one year, like, of getting together. The second year, parents would walk in and say, "Oh, I left my person in the car. I have to get my ID." You know, it's like they accepted the program. They understood how it went. Faculty are looking forward to it, because faculty feel a whole lot better when they know that front office has verified people who are coming in. And this is not only for our community, but it's for any worker who comes in. So if somebody comes in from Comcast, if a plumber comes in from a plumbing company, if a contractor comes in, and if they cannot show us that their employee has had a background check, then what we do is, we slide it through real quick and verify people who come into our school. So everybody will be verified as to who they are when they come in. Were there any questions that the board might have agree? From looking at the handout that went there? And like I say, next month, somebody from Rapture will either be here, or it'll be a phone kind of conference that they get, because she is out of town, is out of state. And then I will say, Rapture is the largest company who works in school districts. They have more school districts than any other company in the county.
Mr. Casali.
Is the decision being made that Rapture is the choice of, are we going to have a beat out?
Lobby Guard, that I was just discussing, came here a few months ago. I think they're like $6,000. That's what Bloom Trail uses. And they gave us all the information, and I still have mine. I actually brought my bag, just in case we want, if they're wrapping up here, to do a comparison. But we all received it in our packet, and they brought a nice packet, and we came and presented. But they were only one company. So we asked Mr. Travellini to go out and look again, give us someone else to look at, and that's how Rapture came about.
Did you say $6,000, $6,004?
Yeah, that was with the labels.
Same thing, same thing.
It's the same thing, okay.
Is that for the equipment?
The equipment, but they would give us the upfront labels, and then eventually we would keep up, you know, with the rest of the labels. I can't remember exactly when I had to pull it out of my bag. Dr. Elme.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One quick question. You said they're out of town, so if, do they have offices here?
Yes, and then they're 24/7 available.
Except for when you need them to come to work?
Something had come up last week. And sales, you got to remember, sales isn't as large as their customer service. Sales department isn't as large.
Okay. Are there any more questions regarding?
Is that the only other one that will do? Is Rapture, so Rapture and blah, blah, I don't know?
Right, there's only two that I want to.
Does anyone else have any more questions, or for me? If they're going to come out next month, are they, are we looking as a board to just hear them again, and actually hear directly from them, even though we have the material? And then everyone, if you have not shredded your Lobby Guard information, we can bring that back forward, so that we can do a comparison before we vote? I think that that would be, but I know I still have mine. I don't know if you all still have your Lobby Guard. And that way we can do a comparison before we vote. The question would be, would we just want to do that discussion, and then wait until the June meeting for vote? Or would you all be interested in less, looking at both, and going forward with the action item? I'm just asking for agenda purposes. Mr. Casali.
What are you going to vote? You're voting to have a beat out, or you're voting to give a contract to someone?
To give a contract to someone. The board did not direct Mr. Travellini to beat out. It was just asked to bring us someone else outside of Lobby Guard to vote.
So do you ever know, or have an idea of how much you're going to be voting for? Because you have to follow some guidelines as to, certain dollar amount that you must give out.
The, I think we do have, I think $25,000. The minimum, $25,000. And even Lobby Guard says $6,000, that's not enough for us to get out.
$6,000?
Yes.
And I know that, once they knew it's $25,000, it's going to be $24,999, and you have a function?
Right, and I don't believe Rapture is $25,000, but I know our minimum is getting out is $25,000.
All right, let's see, Davenport.
Okay. Okay, no more discussion. So next, next board meeting, it will be a discussion, not an action item. Moving on to item A, Village, Saw Village video. Will be at the hands of our mayor, Mr. Dave Hanks and Mr. Travellini, or you're not ready?
The person will be calling us around 6:30, and then we could do a phone. They wanted to do a phone conference with the board.
Okay. Moving in at 6:30, we'll take a break. Can you explain what this is, with the video? There are two videos going for- that was why I wanted to hand it over. The mayor was here to speak for himself, because for my understanding, there are two videos of those videos. Mr., to say, for second time, Mr. Mayor Hanks, would you like to explain to the board?
Sure, we have a professional company that's looking at Saw Village. They're going to be coming out. They're going to be doing videos. We've asked them to point out, especially, like, our school board. They're probably going to talk to you about certain things that they want, you want videotaped, just schools, the, of the board. We've got them going out and looking at businesses, so we can get the video. It's a marketing material for our village, semi-professional company. They're probably going to tell you that if there's anyone that's inside the video, you have to sign waivers. So you have to decide if you're going to do something at school, and you have kids present, everyone that's in that video has to have a waiver signed. So again, it's something that's showing to be great for our community, so that we can try to bring, not only just businesses to Saw Village, but try to bring residents coming and move to our community.
Mr. Casali.
Well, this is my first, and it's, I'm really aware of this, because I don't think that I know these videos can come. It's someone that just decided when approached to go put these on the agenda, and doing this course drops. But my question to the mayor is, what are you marketing out? What are you marketing yourself?
It's just about Saw Village. We want to highlight what we have great about our community. We want to highlight our school board. We want to highlight our schools, local businesses in our community, residents that want to be on there. So it's just a, something that someone can go to a website, to our village website. You can even put it on your school board website, and they click on Saw Village. It's just kind of like a, if I call it marketing, but it's pretty much just a review of what the village is for someone who's looking to move in this area, maybe from out of state. They can go there and say, "Do I want to move to Saw Village?" And it kind of gives them a brief description. Again, the timing on the video, I don't have exactly how long it's going to be, but again.
Vice President Jones.
At whose expense, and what's the cost for this?
No cost to the village right now. There's no cost at all. They came to us. What they do is, they try to get local businesses to pick up some of the costs, because of course, the local businesses will have, be on these, on these videos. So they do, they go out and they reach out to get all the funding. So it's at no cost to the village.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President. What they wanted to do is, look at the grounds, like at our schools, inside and out. So if somebody is looking to move to Saw Village, they wanted to see the condition of our schools, and what we had to offer, gymnasiums, our labs that we have, bowling cards, and types of things that would sell. The person would say, you know, they're up and coming, and we would like to be a part of that school district. Because I will tell you, that school districts draw people moving to it.
Okay, are there any more questions regarding the video Saw Village? So at 6:30, in about 10 minutes, 10, 13 minutes, we will come back while we're doing our reports. I'd like to move to item 3B, correspondence. Mr. Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Madam President, we have one, and it's addressed to superintendent, administrators, and board of education. It is a thank you from the Loco and Danish family. Thank you so much for the beautiful flowers. They went with him on his final trip ride. Sincerely, to Loco and Danish family.
Item four, committee's delegate reports, A, finance.
Our chairman's chair. He met this evening at 5:00 in a conference room. As of April 23rd, 2014, the vouchers are waiting to be taken by the comptrollers for our school district. It's $343,033. And please note, the comptroller's office is relatively up to date, with only vouchers for late March and April, awaiting process. Our fund balance as of March 2014 is $18,136,148.65. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Governor Howard. We're going to move on to items B and C, our scope and AMO in the office. Dr. Elme.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things for scope. One, there's a dinner. It's Saturday, so we have five, seven board members have RSVP for that. If you have not, please, see me. Also, we have an action alert that came out on the 25th. Call your state senators to oppose bill SB 3004. And this bill, they say, would limit the ability of school districts to issue out school suspensions and extortions. And they believe that districts must retain the ability to deter harmful behavior, and ensure that students and staff are safe at school. More specifically, if the proposed legislation passes, if a student, if a student has committed an act of school disobedience or misconduct, that's, that's the criteria for out of school suspension. And if a student continues to pose a form of threat, only in the physical, but this does not include electronic means. So any bullying or anything that happens in the electronic world does not go underneath this bill. So they're asking us to call, and oppose it. That is, that concludes my report for scope. I have nothing at this time for OMA.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to item D, speed. Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No report at this time.
Item E, Vice President Jones, chair committee for policy.
We have, back on the agenda again, for approval for the board, updates to press.
Under policy, there were some, were there some that required immediate action, and some required table?
Yes, some of them are mandates that we have no, no say so. And the others had to go out for 30 days for me.
Thank you. Based upon that, item F, I'd like to make a motion to place on the table for first reading press policies for February 2014 as presented. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Elme?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Mrs. Davenport.
Yes, motion passed. Item five, now just one moment, it will be our superintendent report. Mr. Secretary, Mr. Travellini.
Yes, and when I did, I lost my, my notes.
Somebody stole them.
Wanted to direct our instructional services, special services. Wanted to, yeah, direct those instructional services. Mrs. Strong.
Thank you, yes. If you take a quick look at the agenda here, item 12, discussion of new business, letters E and F, it is concerning the violin player. And I've been talking about this all year, and it's time for it to be on the agenda now. And I put a memo out to the board at the beginning of this month. We now have 13 ESL students in second grade at Wagner, and 11 third and fourth grade ESL students at Strasburg. So when we combine those, obviously, we get more than 20 students. Over the summer, some students may move out, some may move in. We're not sure. But what we're looking to do at this point is, we would like to request a violin teacher position, if in fact, the numbers stay where they are. We're not looking to necessarily hire by the way that we are looking. And if the numbers happen to decrease below 20, then we would not be hiring. But what we're asking for is that position to be available and approved, because it is a new position. So that needs to be approved before we could even go look if we need to.
Is this the, the position that before, we needed one originally? That's one of the ones that's very hard to find someone?
Yes.
So is your request for us to go forward with this, is so that if you do find someone, you can go ahead and grab that person without having to try to go that long search process?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, Mr. Travellini, are you ready?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for finding my notes. Regarding the Presidents' Day off and Lincoln's Day off, we were contemplating taking both of those. I just, I took a survey of six districts around us, and it's, four districts are taking Presidents' Day. Bloom just voted at their last meeting to take Presidents' Day as opposed to Lincoln. And there's two districts that take Lincoln's birthday off. So we are right now at Lincoln, so we can either stay at Lincoln, or we could go to Presidents', I mean, whatever the board's pleasure is. But no district is taking both Presidents' Day and Lincoln's Day.
Okay. We'll be discussing that further in depth when we get to item 11. Just giving everyone a minute, so, is there any more?
And then, our seventh graders went to Springfield, the 23rd of April, last week. And I just wanted to announce to the board, and I think I mentioned to some of the board members, but the community could also. Our students that went did a fabulous job. They were respectful. They enjoyed themselves. We got rating reviews from restaurants. We got rating reviews from some of the people that were at the State House, at the State Capitol, for the way the students conducted themselves, the questions that they asked. So I think we should all be proud of our students, and I think the teachers are doing a wonderful job. Mr. Strong and I met with, by phone with Mr. Holcomb, and he's the, one of the vice presidents for Positive Connections. And he indicated that they're purchasing 59 new buses this year. And all buses will be on what they call a block plug-in, meaning that when the weather gets cold and below zero, they'll, they're going to keep the engines warm. What they had to do this winter was keep the engines running all night. So they had somebody there to make sure that they, so that they would be ready for us in the morning, because it was so, so cold. So he, he just wanted me to know what they're doing, and I just wanted to let you know where, how they're proactive with their plans for the future of us. their plans for the future of, of us. Also, I think everybody got information regarding, uh, Dr. Walters' party at Speed, which is in May. She will be leaving Speed and she's gonna be taking a super tendency, can't be keyed. At this time, that concludes my report.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
Um, Positive Connections, would that affect the contract or any finances or increase with us with their new moves, uh, keep keeping their engines speeded?
No.
I'm just giving you the date.
What for Dr. Walters?
Friday, May twenty-third.
Friday, May twenty-third for Dr. Walters?
No, I did send it to my, my last update today.
It should be in the update, so it should be in the update.
Should be in your update.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Travellini. Moving on to item seven, Director of Special Education, Mr. Johnson.
All right. Moving into the board. Few things, um, deviled training, we're up to par with our deviled training. Every school building has a good number of individuals that have been trained in our safe and positive approach, approach to responding to crisis. Um, our summer explorers program is gonna be kicked off again this summer for our special ed population. Uh, we're looking to host another, back on popular demand, uh, roundtable discussion with our parents. They, uh, they came and participated in the previous roundtable and they made recommendations that we hold, um, another discussion prior to the end of the school year. And then we're looking to start, uh, really campaigning with our early intervention services for students who are at the age of two and three, who are in need of specialized services prior to school. We wanna make sure that we start targeting that population, getting them that early intervention services and making sure that they're ready when it comes time for kindergarten. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay. Moving on, it's almost six thirty, so until then, we're gonna move on to item eight. Members of the general public, comments are welcome, but will be limited to three minutes each. If we receive a phone call in from the video agency, we will pause so that we can go ahead and do the video conference. Also, just as a reminder, if you could please address your concerns to the chair. If there's something that's school-related where the superintendent is able to answer, he will, we'll hold, give your information and get back with you at a later time. Also, as a reminder, even in reference to our board, the board does not engage the audience. Uh, so that's just a reminder for everyone. And once you stand, if you can state your name clearly for the record, and you have three minutes. Is there anyone? Mayor Hanks.
Board, I'd just like to, again, David Hanks, Mayor of South Village. Uh, this last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to participate in career day at Rockover, uh, Junior High School. But thank the board, like the teachers, uh, they did a fantastic job. Uh, they may so very welcome. I was in Mrs. O'Hara's class, so, uh, um, I had four different sessions, uh, with the youth. Got to explain to them the duties of mayor's and, uh, we opened it up to the floor and it took all their tough questions. So, you know, if I ever get invited again, we'll have a different agenda. I think, I think, I think the young people have tougher questions than their parents do. But I had a great time. I'd like to thank you for, uh, allowing me to come and, uh, being with the youth. So you should be very proud of your teachers and the principals. Uh, they did a great job. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? For Speed. Okay. We're gonna move on to item nine. We only speak once. I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session at six thirty, at six thirty PM regarding A, personnel, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. So moved. Sorry. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. Elamine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion passed. We are entering into closed session at six thirty PM. Move slow, just walk faster. Okay? I'd like to make a motion to return to open session with action to be taken at seven thirty-six PM. So moved. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. Elamine?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion passed. We are in, we have returned to open session at seven thirty-six PM. Item eleven, A, discussion of unfinished business and board action regarding honoring President's Day. Our, our superintendent has already given us the statistics on the surrounding areas, keeping in mind that, um, President, we currently uphold Lincoln's birthday because we land of Lincoln, we Illinois, that's kind of what the previous boys wanted. Um, a lot of people out of school, they kind of come from other schooling and filtering schools that work with us, and that's why we decided to look at President's Day. Uh, I know everything is pretty much shut down. You don't even get mail on President's Day. Uh, but it would be a choice at this point, uh, just from listening to Superintendent Travellini of doing an either or opposed to a both. But is there any discussion, uh, at this time? Mr. Casali?
Yeah, I think, I've been here a little while, and this subject just keeps coming up. I'm the most senior board member here. Lincoln, this is the land of Lincoln. We can only take one or the other. So Lincoln is being the one that most people know. President's Day is, everybody is president. And really, I would like for us to stay with Lincoln, to have that day off, and since we can't have two, so I think that we should just continue the way we had it and continue to have, uh, Lincolnly, uh, video for this school district.
Hi, Dr. Elamine. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to see us more aligned with other school districts, um, in the area, especially because we go, um, over the road trail. Uh, to have multiple kids with different ways off is, uh, inconvenient for parents. Um, so I would say let's switch President's Day to align ourselves with the majority.
You agree, Vice President Jones? For me, uh, we also have a school that filters into our district, which is Cedar Fort High. About eighty-five to ninety percent of their students are South Village students. And this, this last spring, even spring break, a lot of times it's awful. We're off, they have school and they have school, and it makes for, it makes it kind of hard to juggle. So for me, I'm in alignment with President's Day. Uh, it's still, we're still not missing out on Lincoln because he still was the president also. So for me, I am just for the President's Day, uh, for that very reason. And to help out with the surrounding schools and, and babysitting and different things, helping, helping out our parents. For me, it's helping our parents and looking out for them is important. Does anyone else have any discussion, comments, or questions? If not, item B, I'd like to make a motion to hon- honor President's Day. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Look.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. Elamine?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion passed. We will now, District One Sixty-eight will now honor President's Day opposed to Lincoln's birthday. Item C, discussion. Discussion of the hire and employment agreement for a new superintendent, Dr. Donna Simpson-Lee. Is there any discussion or comments that anyone would like to make at this time? Dr. Elamine?
I know that, um, we did a lot of work, um, to find a superintendent. We spent numerous hours, um, we hired an outside consulting team. Um, and we asked very, uh, critical questions. So I feel, I feel very comfortable that we have done, um, our homework on hiring a new superintendent. So I wanna applaud the board, um, and the, and the, the very long nights that we put into this process. Um, regardless of the outcome of it, I know that we did our due diligence. I feel very, very comfortable, um, in that.
Does anyone else? Uh, Mr. Casali?
Well, I do not want to repeat the same thing that, uh, Dr. Elamine just said, that I'm the accused of, uh, tolerance. I think that if the candidate that we are getting tonight is a friend to President Barack Obama, she is qualified to be this Secretary of Education. That's the highest level. That I'm very confident that selecting this person, this district is extremely lucky to have her. And where she was coming from, she helped increase the GPA and all that for that district. So I am really very confident that we're really lucky to have this kind of person. Thank you.
Are there any more comments or discussion at this time? Before I called a motion, um, myself, we, uh, we had a lot of candidates. We did not, as a board, we went through an agency, BWP and Associates. Um, we, we had, what, forty-five applicants? Uh, we did not, as a board, get to see all of those applicants. Uh, we asked them to bring us the best of the best. Um, we had, we looked at seven candidates. Uh, they were all great, great candidates, uh, with different skills. They were all bringing different things to the district. And, uh, the, the interesting thing is that we are se- we are a board of seven. We are individually voters. We vote individually, uh, which brings us, us with different perceptions and different views on what is the best, what's considered the best of the best, what's considered the most qualified. So I just, even in, uh, going forward and me calling out this motion, that, that, that be reminded that whatever, to always vote your conscience and to know that everybody's perce- perception is different on the best of the best. Me personally, I have my personal views. I have the views of what I feel the children need. I have the opinion of what I believe our state, our, our staff, I mean stakeholders too, I've forgotten stakeholders, but what our staff needs and the importance of chemistry and a variety of things. So I, I, but I do know one thing about me, that I love my board, I love my district, I'm a stakeholder, I'm a taxpayer, and I ha- I am a parent and a participating parent in the district. And based upon me saying that, no matter what the board decides to do, no matter which way the whole goes, me, as a sitting president, as a sitting stakeholder, as a sitting parent, will work with whomever the majority of this board goes with because that's who I am, that's what I do. And I still have to make sure that everything goes smoothly, no matter who it is, and everything goes well in our district. With that being said, I'd like to move on to item eleven D. I'd like to make a motion to approve the hire of and. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the hire of an employment agreement for a new superintendent that would be, uh, Dr. Donna Simpson-Lee?
I'm making a motion. I'm making a motion to approve the hire and employment agreement for the new superintendent, Dr. Elamine.
I say.
Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Elamine?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
No.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, no. Delores Green, Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
No. Motion passed. Just staff, thank you all for coming out. Everyone at South Stakeholders, I would like to take this moment to introduce to you, to thank the board for the celebration, to introduce to you our new.
Food.
Mr. Casali. Uh, I'd like to introduce to you our new, uh, sitting, uh, about to be sitting, incoming, uh, superintendent, Dr. Donna Simpson-Lee. If she can please come, uh, and everyone.
Oh, I would be very brief, I would be very brief because I know you have a lot more, uh, for me to receive. But I just wanted to say thank you very much. And I want to concur that this board did spend a great deal of time, energy, and efforts really to look out for the community, for the district, for the staff, the questions that they asked of me, um, the, the evidence I produced for them so that they could see that I'm about children, I'm about, number one, always making sure that every single child gets everything they need every day, and that our staff is supported to make that happen. So I am thrilled. Um, when they asked me, one of the questions I talked about was creating this sort of destination education, where we talked about moving to South Village so that you can get a quality education for your child. And then we partner with our high school district so that we build bridges so that young people, when they leave South Village District One Sixty-eight, they are living lives of success, of significance, and making a difference in this world. That's why I'm here. And I just wanna say thank you all for working with you, board. I'm, uh, very appreciative to our cabinet staff. I'm looking very much forward to working with you all and to you, because I know that you hold so many of the pieces together. So thank you.
Moving on to item twelve, discussion of new business and board action. Item A, consent agenda. Are there any, any questions? Any, any discussions? Anything for removal from consent agenda? No? If not, I'd like to make a motion.
Whatever, explaining just the process.
Yeah, we, we, we're doing, we have tweaked our agenda, just so you know. Uh, this is Sue Glover, one of our attorneys. We've tweaked the agenda. So we're trying to, so we're doing things a little differently, so she's quoting along.
So what the, okay, what the, what the, the next step the board would be to take would be a motion to establish the consent agenda as presented, unless there are items that the board wishes to pull off and consider separately as a separate action item. So if the board is, is comfortable with the consent agenda as it is set forth here, the next action item would be a motion to establish the consent agenda as presented. And then once that is done, then you would do a motion to approve the consent agenda. Because first you have to establish it and accept it, then you approve it. Any questions procedurally, how that would work?
Do you want a motion?
I, yeah, I can't, I can't put the motion. Uh, so it would be a motion to accept the consent agen- agenda as presented. If you, if you are comfortable with all the items. If there is any item on the consent agenda that you wish to vote on individually and not part of the consent agenda, then you ask that that item be pulled.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Mr.? Did you, did you?
So a motion?
Yes.
You got a second? Ms. Elamine? Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. Elamine?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Yes, with Ms. Howard.
Consent agenda. Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Uh, yes, motion passed. Now, I'd like to make a motion to, item B, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Elamine?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion passed. Item C, for discussion, the amm- to amend the public school calendar twenty thirteen through twenty fourteen. Mr. Travellini?
What we had to do is we had to add four days because we had the snow day, so we're going to June tenth. So we have to have a motion over there. And we had to do an amendment, add an amendment and a motion, so that we can go ahead. It's already in my computer, ready to go. And before I hit tonight, I can press the button, send it off this day. And before I hit tonight, I can press the button, send it off to state.
Are there any questions? Comments? Okay, I'm moving on to item D. I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended public school calendar respecting the four emergency school days used during the 2013-2014 school year, making the last day of school June 10th, 2014.
Some hold. Second.
Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Miss Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. Elamie?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion passed. Item E, new bilingual teachers, Strasburg School, for discussion. That's what Mr. Strong referred to earlier in his report. Are there any further questions or discussion?
If you need a teacher, he's just going to go ahead and hire or is he going to come back to us?
No, he's gonna, we're, we're, this would be a fool to hire without coming to us because there's such a challenge in even finding someone. So they don't want to have to wait to have a board meeting, to have to have a board meeting to do it. Is that what you said earlier?
Close, very close. But we still do a board hire sheet, just like we've always done the board hire sheet, and you will still receive that. So this is for the actual positions to be created so that we can be ready to go when we need to.
So the position will be in place if needed?
If needed, is the state law, is how many students?
Twenty.
Okay, so that's more of a creation, not an actual hiring question?
Correct.
Creation, okay, so I just changed it on the agenda so that it's like that. Okay, are there any more questions? Mr. Casali?
Yeah, do we know the salary?
It will be on the, it's on the teacher's schedule, teacher's salary, salary schedule. So it depends if they have a master's degree, how many credits they have. It's in the contract that's for negotiated with the union.
So now that this is coming up, you know, we already done the budget.
We, we have this.
What is that?
That would be for the upcoming school year budget, 2014-2015.
Oh, 2014-2015. Now they want that we already plan 2013-2014.
Correct.
2014-15. So is a new school?
New school, yeah. Starting in August.
And, yeah, that's only if we have between students.
Correct, yes.
The rationale is, if we hit twenty students and say it's October 1st, we have to wait two, three weeks until we have a board meeting to where we get approval or have a special meeting. Now, when we hit that, we can immediately go into motion and look for a person and get the ball rolling and not let it wait like we had in the past. Well, in the past, we had our funding, but we could, I think we have a different, different line now, so it's more.
Mr. Casali?
Yeah. Mr. Strong, one, we would know this, time of registration or if your students are going to be moving, I know, I know that.
Correct. If we have higher numbers at the end of school and early registration than we try to do during the summer, then we will know at that time. But if we don't have the numbers yet, then we may have to wait until August.
Are you able to get any money for the government for it, like special grants and stuff?
Lots of thoughts running through my mind right now, but...
Yeah, that's what I want you to know. I want to know something you want to think about.
There is twenty-three, no child left behind, but we do not get the Title III grant at this time. And that is, we're bilingual. But our population in the area, it depends on the state whether they're going to award us that or not, and they have not yet done that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I like item F, I like, twelve F, I'd like to make a motion to approve the creation of a new bilingual teacher for Strasburg Elementary School if needed. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Miss Howard? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. Elamie?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion passed. We're still on item twelve, twelve G. The authorization to bid for lawn service contract, maintenance, lawn maintenance service contract. Are there any questions on the authorization to go out for B? Mr. Casali?
I remember that a few months ago, the company that we have right now, the contract was not revealed, and the majority of the board decided that they are going to do it, the district is going to do it. So what changed? Why are we now going to put out a B for lawn care of this?
Mr. Johnson? We had four custodian, four maintenance men, one retired, we did not replace him. The one that retired was the person that was going to be cutting the grass. So when he retired, we did not replace him. We do not have personnel to do the lawn service.
So the person that retired, how much was that person making? Because the lawn business, as far as I know, is going to be twenty-something thousand. Maybe you can replace that person with less money. And since you guys have in your mind that you want somebody to be cutting the grass, which I know is a lot of work.
I would have to... No, he would, he would do it, he was a maintenance man.
Right.
He was making, yeah.
Did the district buy any equipment for this?
No, we did not, we did not. When he was going to retire, we did not want to jump in and work on buying something. We had all those months to make a decision. And I'm happy now that that's the position that we took. We wanted to wait and see. So we did not purchase any equipment. So that's another thing we have to, we have to do is purchase equipment.
Dr. Elamie?
Thank you. I agree with board member Casali. We did discuss this and said that we will try to negotiate that duly onto the other duties of maintenance. And so I'd like to see us actually try to do what we discussed in the board, put something out for the year.
My comment is, like I said, the agenda comes out two weeks in advance. So for me, thank you for doing the homework on it. And, and, and one thing, I just want to commend you on doing the work. And I know that we agree is where we're supposed to look at things if we have questions in advance so we don't surprise you because, and then, and board, I would like to recommend you guys, to you all, when we, when we do have things on the agenda, if you can, give back to myself or to the chair or to the superintendent so that we can relook at it or reword things and kind of fit things in. Because I do, I vaguely remember that, I believe we did, I'm vaguely remembering saying, let's do it on our own, but you should have done a little homework or kind of got some more pricing even on equipment and kind of brought it to us so that we don't have to delay so far and take up board meeting time this minute for discussion, then next month take up again so that we can see how much it's going to cost. Because now, at this point, we're going to need to know how much equipment and things are going to cost, how much it'll cost to get a person to actually do it. And so it'll kind of help expedite some of those decisions and the things that we make. So I'd like to request, Mr. Casali?
Well, as somebody that's been in South Village for close to twenty years, I've been paying attention to everything that's going on in the village and early school board, I think that I don't want to waste time because the reason why we have the lawyer sitting over there is to make sure that proper procedure is followed. There's been three board president before, we never had somebody sitting like this with board president. Mary was president before. So all that, uh, calling or sending email ahead of time and all that kind of stuff, people have work to do. We have a professor amongst us that have to grade and all that kind of stuff. That's not always possible to do. So sometimes you're going to get the questions right there at this minute. So we are cautious of what you say, but at the same time do not, you know, expect that that's going to happen all the time.
I, I don't expect it to happen all the time. I'm glad you made that statement, that is true. We do also have a board agreement where the board has prepared, that we keep up here in case anyone forgets, and to relook at it at any time, is why it's the Roberts Rule, where the board agreed to make sure that they read their information and get their questions in. That was something that the board did, not I, not me. As president, my job is to follow the rules of the board agreement and the Roberts Rule. So that's what I do. That's why I made the statement, if you're not able to, but on a regular basis, I was just saying, let's try to, let's try to do better and not saying it'll never happen. As far as the authorization, it's only requesting to give the authorization to go out to bid, to get numbers, to get things. It's not actually asking to hire someone or to hire an agency. It's just, just as they would get information on how much it'll cost to get equipment and hire an employee, it would also be versus how much it will cost right now to go out for it, so when it comes back. So at this point, when it comes back to the board, correct me if I'm wrong, when it comes back to the board, we'll see both sides. How much it'll cost if we hire someone outside at this point in day and age, and how much it'll cost if we do go forward with what the board recommended, wishes to do on our own. Am I correct, Mr. Travellini?
Correct.
Thank you. Dr. Elamie?
Thank you, ma'am, chair. And thank you, board member Casali, for bringing that up in discussion because that's something that I had forgotten, you dropped my memory. So I do appreciate you bringing that up to the board.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions or discussion on the authorization for bidding? At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorization to bid for lawn maintenance service contract as presented.
Some hold.
Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. Elamie?
No.
Mrs. Green?
I have a question for the board on the board to tell my folks. Are we to do, I should just do it in the actual, we'll have a discussion.
Technically, it should have no discussion, but...
So in the future, guys, will we have a discussion right away? And because we're voting right away, we, we should, we have to have our discussion beforehand. So once we actually call the names, we won't interrupt them in this case because this is new, the agenda's new, we're going to vote for per...
So we're going to get voted? We're going to get voted?
Yes, yes.
See how much it costs for hiring a person, rehiring people to do it versus hiring an outside company to do it.
If this motion passed, if, if this motion passed, we'll get voted. If it fails, then we won't get voted. We'll just have to know how much the equipment is and how much it costs hiring somebody. We won't be able to see the option if it fails.
Miss Howard? Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion passed. Item twelve, I, yeah, and this is again the similar situation, authorization to bid for milk service contract.
Some hold.
Are there any discussion?
I'm sorry.
This is conversation again, and it's similar to the lawn service one. Board member Green?
Didn't we just do a contract last year? Um, not last year, but previous to this.
Of the milk service contract?
Exactly.
Mr. Travellini, would you like to go into detail?
Go with my... I agree with you.
We bid the milk contract four years ago. We didn't have another deal, but we could renew. However, I'm asking the board if we could go to bid because we know the milk company who has expressed desire to work, to bid for the milk contract. And due to some concerns I have with the current milk company, that's the reason I put it up to ask to bid.
Because we only have that one, correct? We only, we only have that one company, the milk, the milk company.
Yes, we only have one, one company. And if you're speaking of the last time we bid it, we bid four years ago, there was only one company that bid it for a milk contract.
Mr. Casali?
Yeah, it's not too much, Mrs. Williams. You said you have concern about the milk company. If I may ask, is it okay if it's not going to get us in a lawsuit or whatever, you know what I mean? What is your concern? Do I have pockets in the district that is drinking milk?
Service, service issues.
Are they overbuilding us?
No, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say overbuilding.
Not so good, the milk is not cold enough? What's really going on?
The one time when the milk was not cold enough, that is, that was not the company's issue. It was a company with the refrigeration unit door not open. So no, I wouldn't say that that was an issue of that company. There were some other service issues where, for example, I can say, where it was in the wintertime and there was a lot of snow and the driver did not want to deliver the milk to the inside because he didn't feel that the area was safe enough for him to bring the milk in, and he left the milk outside the door. It was winter, it was, you know, freezing outside. Our maintenance guy, someone in that area, custodian or someone, did, you know, take that milk and put it in the correct area.
So the person that brought the milk, did they talk to him? Why they left the milk there? Is it because nobody answered the door? Or why would we do the job?
Did I feel that it was, the area was appropriately maintained or cleaned, snow in America where he wanted the milk in?
And that's our duty to make sure that they have safe passage. And somebody did not do their job, did not clean the milk, and the milk man left the milk right there. That's why I was going to fire them?
Well, not necessarily firing. As I say, the other, the other part of the contract, is that when we bid a contract, we can renew that contract up to five years if we so desire. If another company expresses an interest in bidding that contract, then we can hopefully should open it up for that company to do it.
This would not prohibit you from extending your contract for additional year or awarding them an additional new contract? It just allows the district to compare, compare prices.
Is this to be done by the last year of the contract or in the middle of the contract?
Is that... It's not, you're not, my understanding is, in this, I haven't seen the contract, but my understanding is you're not in the middle of the contract. You are at the end of the contract. The contract does have the option for a one-year extension, but it is not part of the initial contract term. The initial contract term is four years with a one-year renewal period. That can be or cannot be, or the board can either choose to exercise it or not choose to exercise it. There is nothing requiring you to exercise that one-year option. You may choose to, or you may choose not to. So this would just allow you to compare options.
Right. And it's to our best interest if there is another company who's interested in bidding the, the contract, then we may get a better price than what we have now.
That new company, did that company reach out to us or would they reach out to them?
No, they reach out to us. Companies reach out all the time and say, put us on your bid list, we would like to reconsider for bidding your particular contract, whatever that is.
Yeah, I just wanted to know that. I did the same thing. I reached out to companies that I don't want to do this anymore. Thank you.
Are there any more questions, conversation? If not, I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorization to bid for milk service contract as presented.
Some hold.
Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. Elamie?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Miss Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion passed. Item twelve K, again, we're discussing authorizations only. Authorization to sell the district's 2002 shared school bus, value at $5,500 or best offer, the value at $5,500 or best offer. Is there any discussion, Mr. Casali?
Yeah, the, I think we arrived at that $5,500. I can't even see anything here. And I also would like to know, what is the process of setting up? Is it going to be a B? Do they already have somebody in mind? They want to study two? What is really going on?
I'd like to refer that to Mrs. Williams.
The value was arrived at conversation with two companies, the current, the company that we purchased the new bus from and positive connections to get their feedback on what can be a good... to get their feedback on what could be um a good starting price for the bus. And your other question is how would we advertise it? It's um, I would like to have it advertised in the newspaper and also to be posted in different businesses around the district. And the superintendent also recommended that we post a sign on the bus in an area that would be really visible to passerby.
Real busy.
Yeah, real busy area.
Can I talk about maybe people can bid for it online or take it to the auction?
No. Any more discussion? If not, I'd like to move on to item L, motion to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorization for the district 2002 Chevy school bus, value at $5,500 or best offer as presented. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll? Dr. O'Neal.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kasali?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion pass. Item B, 12B, the approval of tentative amended budget for fiscal year 2013 through 2014. Again, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Williams. How does this do?
The reason for amending the budget is to align the budget with um the changes we made since the initial approval, which is back in September. Uh, mainly it's because of the bond sale, which allowed us to transfer monies from the working cash. And uh, debts are as far as to the education fund. So it's mainly just to align and change those and to include those in budget.
Any questions, discussion? Mr. Kasali?
Are we aligned with the current budget? How things are running?
As far as whether we are on, on target at the end of it?
Uh, we spending too much? Are we spending too low? Are we okay?
Uh, at the beginning of the year, we did show, I think at that point it was projected of a $3.4 million deficit. Uh, I think we're running below that at this point, but we're not, um, we're still running a deficit.
We still running a deficit? And that's gonna go on to next year?
Potential going to next year.
And it's gonna get to be more because if we are minus, whatever, about 3.4, how much do you think? Is it gonna be close to that, 3.4?
Uh, right now, and this is really tipped too because there are still some revenues that are not booked yet and we have not received yet. But right now, at last look, and that would be according to the, um, this, also according to the March position statement, I would say we're someplace close to about $2 million.
Two?
Two million. And that, and that's, that's definitely a projection.
Are there any more discussion on the amended budget? For me, uh, I think that the board plays a, play a major role in uh, in the deficit also outside of trusting you and the superintendent, the business manager and superintendent in finding ways to cut. We have an opportunity as a board to cut in areas that is important for us to really take. I would recommend as a board, we take it, take some of the actions that we take very much more seriously. There have been times when we've been able to cut some monies and, and, or cut some things or trim some things. And we did not sort of kind of, and, and, and we can get it, have a better grasp while we're asking the staff to, hey, we need you to trim, we need you to meet. So I, I know that we're playing a major role. It's important even for me to really, really make sure uh, that I'm really looking at things when we're approving things, when we're looking at things that I just need to give that recommendation to us, you know, uh, and some of the things that we do that we are approving to help out with that which you're already trying to trim as much as possible. I know we just did the rift and different things like that, so.
That would really reflect on next year's.
It would reflect, and, okay. There's no other comment. I'd like to move to item 12N. I'd like to make a motion to approve the tentative amended budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014 as presented.
Some hold. Second.
Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kasali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion pass. Item 12O, uh, discussion of approval of a resolution to include compensation paid under an Internal Revenue Code Section 125 Plan as IMRF earnings. Mr. Trevall, would you like to elaborate?
I'm gonna request that to, um, business manager?
I lost my page, uh, but, um, there was an audit of our IOMRCA, which is Golden Municipal Retirement Fund, uh, for non-certified employees in retirement fund. And in that audit, um, it was determined that there were some, well, let me just go back. The old life service, Section 125, has to do with the forty benefits that are, um, withheld from a portion of salary on a pre-tax basis. Basically, it's mostly insurance premiums. And there are some other things that follow under that code. The auditor found that when we report salaries to the IOMRCA fund, some of those pre-tax monies were included in that compensation that's reported to them, which affects um the retirement funds for employees. There's a statute that also allows the district to, I'm sorry to some of you because I lost my point on here with my little spiel. Can't find it. Okay, thank you. Wait. IMRF performed an audit reconciliation for loss wages of 2013. And as a result of that reconciliation, it noticed that the district was not exempting the IRS Code Section 125 plans. Uh, the district was not able to provide um an adopted resolution to support the action. The IMRF and IRS Code allows the district to go back at least four years and make adjustments. We went back and we found that it would be, it would not, it would not be worth the time to try and go back through all of the records for all of the employees for more than four years. Therefore, IMRF allows us to do a resolution which we were unable to find. There may have been a, a resolution done some time ago, but we were not able to locate it. And since we didn't have a copy of it, that means we have to do it again. So that's the purpose of doing this resolution. It aligns us so that the board, with a resolution to say, okay, you can include those pre-tax earnings in IMRF reports.
Mr. Kasali?
Mrs. Williams, what does this mean to, do you mean that we owe employees some money?
It does not mean that we owe employees any money. It strictly has to do with the way the calculations are done on their retirement, uh, funds in IMRF.
I guess it's about just been asked, can you make?
Well, if, if we were going to go back and adjust, I mean, so we would adjust the compensation reports that's been reported to IMRF for years back. But those reported years back, so let's say, in this particular case, an employee, um, their earnings were $33,000 in that particular year. And maybe $25 of that was because they had some pre-tax, uh, medical expenses. But when we reported, um, to the IMRF, it was reported $33,025 instead of just $33,000 basic salary. So we would have to go back and re-report to IMRF and say, oh, it wasn't $33,025. We should have reported $33,000. And we would have to go back to actually what she said was the inception of the district. But we could do it for four years.
So in other words, the state is allowing us to go back four years? Is either we overstated or understated? What? Is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct. For purposes, um, for purposes of pension, yes.
So for purposes of pension, we have overstated a lot of the reporting that was done to them?
Exactly.
So we have to make that adjustment to make sure that it was right?
Uh, what this resolution is allowing the district to do is to say, you do not have to go back and make any adjustments as long as the board says a resolution to say, it's okay that, um, the, those earnings are reported.
What I would say that the best thing to do is to make sure we made the adjustment for as many years as they gave us to make the adjustment. We made the mistake. We now overstating the salary of these people, of these hardworking employees. And a lot of them are supposed to be home already, and they're still here sitting with us. So I think it's our fault, we have to fix it.
But it's not a disadvantage to the employee.
It's a disadvantage.
It's, it's actually an advantage to the employee.
I don't know if this will help.
But when they are drawing the monies.
I'm sorry, I was just, I don't know if this will help or not, but I dealt with this issue for other districts. And under, under IMRF, if the board chooses to adopt this, this resolution will permit the board to include monies that are held, withheld for Section 125 plans as part of the creditable earnings for the employee for pension purposes. If you do not, if you do not adopt the resolution, then those, I, that additional money is not permitted to be included to the recording of the, um, to IMRF of the creditable earnings. So what this does is by adopting this resolution, which the board may or may not have done in the past, it sounds like we can't find our.
No, no.
Well, if.
I inherit the sounding yes.
Okay. So if you, if you, by adopting this, the board is permitted to include as creditable earnings for that employee's pension purposes, any monies that the employee chooses to withhold for Section 125 purposes. And as Dr. Pres, uh, Mrs. Williams said, 125, most commonly is used, Section 125 funds are most commonly used for paying the employee's portion of their insurance premiums. So what this does is, is bring the district in line with what it has reported. It, it makes sure, it, it provides a backup paperwork for the district to do that. Without this, the district would then have to go back and make all those salary adjustments, um, to, to remove that.
Right. Dr. O'Neal?
So was this an error on our part?
Yes, I would say yes.
And so what do we have in place now where this does not occur again? Uh, what changes have we made systematically or that it does not occur?
Well, the, the resolution was, what put us on the right track?
On the right track, like four or five years from now.
Oh, I, I, I get what you're saying. No, our system now, again, if an addition has been there where we can remove those funds and it would not be reported incorrectly.
Okay, so it was this, the system that we had in place before that was, that was, um, giving us the errors? Will we replace that system? Is that correct or not?
Well, it's been so many years, I, I don't know if it was necessary in the system. I would say that maybe part of it, but it part, I will say it was due to. It was just, um, not having the knowledge to know that those funds were not supposed to be reported.
Madam President, one more question. Our, what one is this?
It's the first, uh, I believe, or the district, um, the per, the auditor who came here had been with the service then for, I think, between 10 and 12 years. And in her record, she's never shown that the district has been on it. Now, if it occurred before that, she did not get that record.
Oh, we do have an internal auditor. Is that part of their job to take a look at how, how bookkeeping and reporting is done?
Yeah, I, I asked that question too. And, um, what she said was that, is that there could have been an assumption made, or there could have been, is what the auditor thought, is that there really was a resolution done sometime way in the past, and that's where you're gonna set it in the system that way. Because a resolution would have allowed the district to go and do just what the district is doing now. So her assumption is that there was probably so many years ago, um, a resolution that was passed that allowed the district to do that.
But the auditor we have now, I am, we have that district that's been in the district for more than five years. And we can try to find out, I'm sure that they have insurance for malpractice. If there's anything that they've done that they did not do properly. Because we've been paying them over maybe 25, 26, 30,000 or something. Because in my own opinion, and from my own professional experience, I think that that's biased on their lap for not catching that. Because they're supposed to audit us and see that we are doing things correctly. And they couldn't catch that without the money that they get. So I think we should look into that and see if there's something, somebody dropped the ball somewhere.
And we can just take a moment and allow, um, we have Mrs. Glover here. I'm trying to see.
There's a difference between an IMRF audit, to get to your point, Mr. Kasali, and, and your audit for the state of what, what your auditor is looking for is whether your books line up, whether the, the, um, you know, they're doing spot checks because they can, are the checks properly approved of processes. And your auditor is not necessarily, I would be, I would be surprised if your auditor would pick up this IMRF because that's, that's why the IMRF does the resolution, or does their audits. So it's a different type of audit. Now, certainly it's worth asking the question in, in, of the, of your auditor, but I, I would strongly suspect that is not something that would be charged with the district's auditor because that's a, that auditor focuses on the internal processes of the district and whether those are being followed as opposed to the IMRF reporting requirements, whether the IMRF calculations are correct. That's IMRF's duty to do.
Yeah, madam President, if I can request for the auditor's contract so I can review it myself and see what they are supposed to do or are not supposed to do. Because I think that, I understand what our attorney says, but the thing is, we have an internal auditor that's supposed to let us know where we need to tighten the screw and make sure that we're doing things properly. So if you don't mind, if that'd be okay, I would like, because every time we get sensitive stuff, you know, they're really a bit shady and all that stuff. But for me to really confirm what the lawyer will say, I'd like to see.
Okay, we, we, we have, we have one note, so that, that actual information will be forwarded to all board members. We'll make sure we get that forwarded down to all board members for review. And I'd like to move on to item four, the board can make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to include compensation paid under an Internal Revenue Code Section 125 Plan as IMRF earnings as presented. Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Howard? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kasali?
I'm staying.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, uh, motion pass. I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of, A, personnel, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Also, I'd like to make, uh, also discussion of lawfully closed meeting minutes, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by, uh, as mandated by Section 2.06, pursuant to the 120 slash 2C21 of the Open Meetings Act at 8:30 PM.
Some hold. Second.
Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kasali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson, yes. Dr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Howard? Mrs. Davenport?
Yes, motion pass. We are entering to closed session at 8:30 PM.